Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. It's November. It's hard to believe. It's Thanksgiving time. It's almost holiday time of the year. All right, good evening, fellow board members. Everybody's had a chance to review our open session minutes of the June 5th and October 2nd board meetings. So we're approving June 5th and October 2nd. End this motion. If there are no changes to be made at this time, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Everybody's had a chance to look at our closed session minutes of the June 5th and October 2nd Board of Education meetings. If there are any changes, we'll make those in closed session. If not, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna add item 7D, which is approval. I think it may already be on your green sheet here, but it is to approve a memorandum of understanding between Pamlico County Schools and Pamlico County regarding our new school project.
Okay, and it is on our agenda, so 7D?
Mm-hmm.
If that is it, I entertain a motion to approve as amended. Motion. Second. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. All right, members of the public, good news.
Good evening. I think we've got two of the happiest Rotary students. Anyway, tonight, we're gonna recognize the Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County High School and Pamlico County Middle School. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County Middle School, is sixth grader Ta'Quan Scott. Mr. Rice, I had this to say about Ta'Quan. Ta'Quan exemplifies what it means to be a king. He is caring, accountable, neat, excellent, and displays self-control at all times. His character speaks for itself. He is consistent, whether it's around his friends or around other adults. He always chooses to do the right thing. We recently had a new student enroll, and Ta'Quan pays sure she felt included the entire day. He held his friends accountable to ensure she was finding her way throughout the school. You can find Ta'Quan holding doors for students, picking up trash in the cafeteria, helping teachers out, and being an active participant in his education. He will always brighten your day with his simple smile and good morning. I am very proud of Ta'Quan and appreciate the young man that he is. Pamlico County Middle School Rotary Student of the Month, Ta'Quan Scott. Next, from Pamlico County High School, the Rotary Student of the Month for Pamlico County High School is 11th grader Zadieh Carter. Just glad she has this to say about Zadieh. Zadieh exemplifies all of our king's values every day. She is respectful to all, takes accountability for her actions, is nurturing to her peers, always puts her best foot forward, and is an example of self-control. One of her teachers describes her as an asset to our classroom and a pleasure to teach. Outside of the classroom, she is a dedicated student athlete participating in both basketball and track. Her teammates describe her as caring, understanding, passionate about the team. Pamlico County High School Rotary Student of the Month, Zadieh Carter.
Good evening, everybody. Just to add a little bit more to the good news here, we would like to recognize our North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, Beginning Teacher of the Year, and that is Ms. Haley Sales. Ms. Sales is a captain teacher at Pamlico County Primary School. This is her second year teaching. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, Haley also serves as a coach at Pamlico County Middle School for volleyball and softball. Haley's just an outstanding person all around. She's the kind of teacher who would face with a challenge. She doesn't give up. She goes to the drawing board, she figures it out, and we are so blessed and thankful to have you, Haley, as part of our school family. So congratulations to Ms. Haley Sales.
And again, congratulations to our Rotary Students of the Month and to Ms. Sales. Congratulations. All right, moving on to our public comments. Our public comment guidelines, the Pamlico County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. According to Policy 1326, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. So we do have public comments. Sign up tonight, Ms. Vicki Mosley Jones.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Don't start my time, what you did. But that's okay. That's okay. Good evening. I just wanted to stand and make a public comment on a meeting that was held, and I'm sure Dr. Johnson will discuss that further, but on November 1st, after a much long-awaited request, we were able to meet with the community partners. And that included Dr. Johnson and his senior staff, as well as board member Jamie Gibbs and board member Kathy Dumbo. And it consisted of parents as well. And I just wanted to report that it was a very good meeting. We were so thankful for the update that Dr. Johnson was able to provide to us, to give us an update of what's going on in Pamlico County Schools, as well as in Pamlico County District, as well as the demographics of the staff, the teachers, administrators, as well as the students. And it was a very, and the goals, I'm sorry, and the goals of the district. It was a very productive meeting. We assured Dr. Johnson and his staff that we were here to assist he and his staff to make sure that the students are successful, that it is not about us, but instead it is about the students, the success of all the students in Pamlico County. And he gave us that same assurance, and that he would be transparent and consistent. And with that being said, we were also very pleased at the diversity, equity, and inclusion goals of the district, the fact that they are continuing, there's still a ways to go. We were all in agreement on that. And with that being said, we're also, I wanted to rise and say that we will be having a town hall meeting, which will be sponsored or hosted by the NAACP Education Committee. And this will be held November 20th at West Branch Missionary Baptist Church on Niels Creek Road. At this particular meeting, our request was that Dr. Johnson, his senior staff, as well as his principals, and all who are involved in the everyday, I guess, activities of the school, would be in attendance, so that he can introduce the community to them, so that parents will know who they are, will be able to put a name, a face with a name, they'll feel comfortable with the protocol. And this is one of the ways that we hope that we'll be able to connect the dots and bridge the gap, so that Pamlico County Schools and the community and parents can, you know, come together. I want to thank you for that, Dr. Johnson. It was a great meeting. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we're gonna move right into our superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are excited to be in November. It's kinda hard to believe that November is upon us, so just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. It'll be Thanksgiving before we know it, and it'll certainly be Thanksgiving. We'll have coming gone by the time we meet again in December. Having said that, I do want to remind board members about our Christmas party. We are planning that for December the 19th, and if you have an RSVP, please do that. We'd love for everybody to come, but that's gonna be on the 19th of December. Just a reminder, too, that our School Board Association Conference is coming up, and that's what we'll be heading out on Sunday. So your travel packets were provided last month. If you have any questions about any of that, reservations, whatnot, please let me know, or Tiffany. As far as the membership report goes, we're down slightly this month. We have 307 students at Pamlico Primary School. That is down four. We held steady at Fred Anderson with 160 students, no change. Pamlico County Middle School added a student, and so they have 258 students now. The high school lost six students, so that brings them to 449. Our grand total for, as of October 31st, was 1,174, and so that is a loss of nine students district-wide. But I would say seven of those students moved out of the county. They actually left and are considerably far away, based on what we were told when they withdrew. So it's just one of those months, but that is our membership report for October. As we look at forward here, we are, wanna give you a little update. I'm looking at my computer screen to give you an update on this assembly product. At the October 2nd board meeting, I was directed to pursue and make arrangements, to purchase a subscription to a board document management solution. And this is what we've done since that meeting. We have, we do have a contract with Assembly Board Documents, and we're putting that into action. You may notice that the screen looks a little different. That is actually our agenda running in this new program. It's gonna make it transparency easy, you know. It's gonna make it available and searchable for our public. It's also gonna make it very easy for our board members to find documents, so that we can cut down on a lot of the printed material that's going out. Ms. Tiffany and I have been, we've participated in three different trainings over the past month, where we learned how to do that. And so what we would like to do tonight, this is accessible. If you wanted to look at it on your screen, it's public-facing. There's a link on our website. But what I would like to do, board members, is actually invite you all to a training, two or three of you at a time, to sit down with Tiffany and myself, and we'll walk you through it. It won't take very long. It's very user-friendly. It's very intuitive. But I'll be sending an email to you, so we can sign up for times, and we'll get that worked out. So I think this is a very positive thing, and we'll be working through it. But I'm glad to help you at any, at all, that you may need it, but before long, you'll see right away. It's very, very simple. As we move on to the next item here, I just want to echo what Ms. Mosley Jones had to say. We, on November 1st, we had a meeting. It was a community partnership meeting, and that is truly what we wanted to make sure that we called that, because it, we want a partnership with our friends with the NAACP. We want a partnership with our community, and I think that's a good first step. And so we had a very productive meeting. We did talk about the demographic makeup of our county, because, and our school district, because it's important to know where we are. If we, and it's important to talk about our goals, so we know where we wanna be. And then it's important, too, to work together to get there. And so that's something that we were able to do. We are looking forward to that town hall meeting on the 20th, where we can talk to members of our community and share on a grander scale what we did on the first, really talking about our goals, who we are, and again, where we wanna be. And together, we'll be able to get there. So we're pretty excited about that. Again, that's on the 20th. With that, we want to come to a part of our agenda where we give you some information that is much anticipated for our district, and that is information about our new school. It has been a process and continues to be a process, and it's one of those things that we want to have this update each month, because we're gonna start to see the new school begin to materialize. And so, as I shared with you, Mr. Henry Rice, our Executive Director of Operations and Administrative Services, he's also serving as our point of contact for the new school. He is the liaison between us and architects and the county commissioners, who tonight are also considering a memorandum of understanding, so, about the new school, so that we can really get this process started. So with that, Mr. Rice, please share with us what you have prepared about the new school and the progress we're making.
Okay. Well, I'll be brief. Thank you for letting me share this with you. We'll talk about our new, the progress of our new schools. So when the budget was released this year, back a couple of months ago, there was a piece in the budget that allowed for an extra $12 million for the schools that had been awarded the grants to build new schools, and this was for inflation and those type of things. You could only apply for it, though, if you had not started the project, which, due to some things, we hadn't really got there yet, so that really paid off in the end. So the new school budget, the funds that are available, the grant, original grant was $50 million, with the state inflation allowance that I just mentioned, $12 million, sales tax rebates of $1.3 million, and then the county contribution of $3,748,593, for a total of $67,48,593. Now, the cost of construction, for the high school and middle school, the schematic design estimate is $64,876,985. The ball field, phase one budget, $950,000. And the fire suppression tank and pump is $1 million. Purpose of this is the county's water flow from the town of Baywood, the tank that's over here, persists the bank, doesn't have enough pressure to run the fire system, the fire extinguishing system. And special inspections testing, $250,000. For a total of $67,36,985, which is under $11,600. It's a good thing. Updating on this start of construction. So 100% of the design documents, they're nearing completion. They should be ready by December the 1st. I've been meeting last two or three weeks, three or four times a week, with the architects and a lot of our staff in the schools, to make sure the rooms fit while they need them to fit. Then on January 11th, 50% of the construction documents should be ready, and then they'll be submitted, all of that will be submitted to DPI and County Bureau on March 1st. Hopefully, that shouldn't be a problem March 1st, because now, all along, they've been submitting pieces to DPI and to people in the county, so that they can get the information back on things they should do differently or think about. So when they get the whole package, there hopefully be no problems, and we can get that approved by June 18th. And then the doctor will be ready for bid on, two days later, on June 20th. Bid day would be on August the 7th, and hopefully, then we can have a notice to proceed on October 8th. That's when construction would actually begin, October 8th of next year, 2024. Everything goes right, the building will be completed on May 6th of 2026. When school gets out that year, on June 15th, we'll begin to demolish the high school and start the parking lot construction. And again, all goes well, on October 9th, excuse me, August 19th, we will begin the new school year, '26, '27, and the new school government. Cross your fingers. Phase two, the next grants, which are opening next week. What the goals are for this phase, consolidation of the primary and elementary schools, additional taking to the primary school, adding all the fourth grade and fifth grade wing, adding a new gymnasium, expansion and renovation of the dining area. The dining area that's current in there is not big enough for the extra two grades, so we'll have to expand it to what is now the gym, and then we'll have to build a new gym. Addition of pre-pain classes, this is the partnership that is now having with Fred Anderson. They will need to come up, so we need more from them. And finish and paint, refresh, general maintenance, that's of the primary school park, and expansion of the parking lot drop off land, which we've been talking about for a while now. Phase two, the middle school baseball field and softball fields, the current cafeteria, adding that to change it to the culinary arts classroom and the ROTC area. And furniture and technology, if we can't find budget, we can pull that somewhere else. Here's the new picture, the most recent picture of what it might look like, different angle. Where I was standing right here, looking at it, I'm somewhere near where the current auditorium is, looking back at it. So this is the inside, the learning commons area, gymnasium, and a closer up of the front of it. And that is my presentation for the season.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rice, any board members? Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. We are certainly looking forward to that. It's an exciting opportunity for, not just our school district, it's an opportunity for Pamlico County. And we're really excited about the prospect of being able to see this project begin and end, and really, in the foreseeable future. So that's really exciting. Just to give you a few other updates, we're gonna call our principals up here for a m- Just to give you a few other updates, we're going to call our principals up here for a moment, but I just wanted to, to reach out and say one, one more thing about our commu-, a community outreach project. If you weren't here for our district trunk or treat, you were one of the few people in Pamlico County who were not because I've never seen such a massive humanity in my life, but it was really just heading all the way down, down the road. Uh, I think we served, uh, well over 350, uh, children. Just really excited about that. It was, it was awesome for the community to come together, and so those who are in this room to help make that possible, thank you. I don't want to go a moment longer without recognizing the efforts of Ms. Tiffany Eastwood. She coordinated that, and so thank you Tiffany, job well done, and really it was, it was something where the whole community could come together and just enjoy time tonight, uh, for, for the children. So it was, it was a lot of fun. So with that, I want to bring up our principals and let them give you a quick report and update. We have just finished nine weeks of school. Our first quarter has come to an end, and they can give you an update on where we are after, after a quarter of the year has, has passed. So Ms. Savannah Alexander, principal of Pamlico County Primary School, come on up and give a quick update, please.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Allison, Ms. Savannah Alexander, I'm the principal of Pamlico County Primary School. Since we last met, a few exciting things have happened at the primary school. We, um, held our annual storybook character parade on Friday, October 27th, which was always a good hit. It was fun to get to be a part of that this year and see all of the kids who participated dressing as favorite book characters. That actually wraps up our National Boy and Prevention League spirit week. We had eight days throughout the week, two for medical and a three for campus. We also had our first pastries for the principal event. Those having on the third Friday of every month, if any of you would like to join us. We focus on a different topic each month. Anyone's really invited to attend, but there are nine topics at the primary school. We actually have Deputy Covington, who's with us tonight, present our topic of school safety. So it was nice for parents to get to hear from our school resource officer and then administration of just about some of the things we're putting into place in our school to promote safety. Last week, we held our quarter one awards ceremony. We celebrated students who just went above and beyond in the first quarter. We celebrated students for academic excellence as well as academic growth, leadership, respect, and courage. We also really tried to make it a big deal for students who had perfect attendance in the first quarter. We're really trying to promote that, um, this year as one of our goals. Other than that, we've just been doing school. Um, we've been working really closely with our ELS, our literacy specialist, for doing question walkthroughs, identifying priority areas to focus on in regards to specifically reading instruction. You know, identifying our strengths and then working together to determine areas that we can grow in to be sure that we're providing the best quality instruction that we can have to our students at the primary level in regards to reading. So we're, you know, doing some things, and how have you prepared here so far?
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Sharon Carter Moore, principal of Fred Anderson Elementary.
Good evening, members of the board, communities, district leaders. My name is, of course, Sharon Carter Moore. I'm the proud principal of Fred Anderson Elementary School. That's kind of my tag. And I want to share a brief overview of some of our accomplishments so far, um, in this academic school year. Um, we've had, of course, our open house where we greeted our communities and our families and students. We demonstrated, um, our school's vision, um, toward our new academic school year, fostering a sense of unity and a shared purpose. We've had several PTO meetings so far this year. We've discussed, um, expanding our parent teacher organization. We've encouraged more parental involvement by initiating discussions about that. And also we surveyed the family to reveal some of their unique talents and interests to try to get more people into the building. During our sit meetings, we've expanded upon our summer planning sessions. We have collaboratively created and approved meeting norms, um, for our meetings to help us have a more effective decision-making team. Um, we have a dedicated sit representative who was elected, and we've drafted our school goals and outlined steps, um, action steps for the rest of the year. We've hosted our fall Title I Reading Night where parents gain insights about how Title I funds are spent, um, at FAA or utilized at FAA. During this event, each grade level presented learning activities, equipped students and families with tools that they can use at home for a more home-based learning, um, resource. The event featured complimentary snacks, and I'm proud to say one of our new PTO volunteers cooked those snacks for us and brought it out and stayed and helped us with the event. So I'm very proud of that. Additionally, we had treats, um, sold by our PTO team. Uh, it was a true sense of community that night. We've also had our, um, award ceremony where parents were invited to participate during those ceremonies, recognizing our students not only for their academic success, but also for their personal growth. I'm thrilled to say, thrilled to say that we've had our first PBIS celebration. And for those of you who are not school, that stands for our Positive Behavioral Intervention Support System. It was a fantastic event and, um, creating a positive, uh, celebrating, um, the positive behaviors and also contributions of our students. Our girls on the run team, um, continues to meet twice a week. Also during this quarter, parents, coaches, and guests participated in a special, uh, reception where our home mothers shared some of their experiences during the summer. The girls on the run season culminate with a 5K run on the morning of November 18th, where they're going to celebrate their physical achievements and their personal growth. And lastly, we are in the midst of our NC check-in assessment. Our NC check-in assessment data allows us to, um, tailor our teaching strategies, interventions, and support for our students, and this is an effort to create unique, to fulfill the unique needs of our students. These highlights reflect the dedication of our school community, our students, and also our parents. We've worked together, we want to ensure the best possible learning experience for our students at Fred Anderson. We are excited and poised about the progress, and we look forward to the rest of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Carter Moore. Mr. Rife Snyder, Pamlico County Middle Schools principal. I don't think it's working.
I'm Wade Ruff, I'm the principal of the middle school. Uh, the first quarter flew by, and there's been a lot of great things happening at the middle school. We had our first positive behavior, um, PBIS celebration, just like the elementary school. Students also participated in their first activity day, which was a huge success. We have our next activity day in two weeks. A few of the activities offered were sports broadcasting, knitting, chess, gardening, and jewelry making. It's a great way to get kids to tap into their talents. Our volleyball team excelled once again, and they were named conference champions. Our football team won their first game in the last three years. And they've been on one of the most, so we won a few games this year, very exciting. We are in the midst of basketball trials right now. I stopped by the gym and watched the boys practice this afternoon. They look really good, so we hope you guys come out and enjoy some of the games. Wrestling has started as well.
We are excited. We are excited to have soccer back at the middle school this winter. Staff were recognized at the state conferences this quarter as well. Ms. Barbara Shy attended the 72nd Conference of Exceptional Children for being our district's educator of excellence. Ms. Hale was a finalist, or one of the finalists for the 2023 NCTE Teacher of the Year Award. She spent one week in Colowee for professional development and brought a lot of good ideas back for our teachers. Our first award ceremony will be Monday, November 13th during electives. Students will be recognized for perfect attendance, honor roll, principal's list, and being a student of excellence. Like you saw earlier, Taekwon Scott, we have a lot of those kids at our school. We have great kids, and we want to highlight everything about them. Our holiday concert will be held on December 5th at 7:00 PM. We hope to see you guys there. And anytime you would like to stop by, please let me know, and we'll make it work. Thank you for everything you do for us.
Thanks, sir. All right, last but not least, Ms. Rebecca Lanchi, principal at the high school, come on down.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Johnson. So to try and keep this somewhat succinct and organized, I'm going to speak to you and give you some highlights from the three As, and that's academics, athletics, and the arts. And one of the awesome things about working at a high school is that all of those layers make the school culture just very exciting. So I'm going to start with academics. I think I shared this at the last board meeting, but our focus this year, and, and really starting out the school year, was really honing in on core instructional practices and establishing very consistent expectations for our students. And we are already seeing just increased engagement across all content areas in the classroom, and we are really, really excited about that. We're finishing up quarter one. We are having our academic awards, um, on Thursday, and we are also adding in PBIS celebrations at the high school, and that's not something that they were doing previously, but we do think it's important. Even though they're high school, right, sometimes we think, well, they should know exactly what to do. They're still children, so we still want to recognize them for doing what they're supposed to. So we are having a student-staff volleyball game on Thursday afternoon, so we're excited about that. I think that'll be a lot of fun. I'm a little bit nervous for our staff, I will tell you that, because they are going to be playing the girls volleyball team, so. I do want to highlight our school counselor and our college advisor, Rachel Wayne. She's new to us this year. They have really got a lot of momentum going with our seniors related to applying for colleges, whether it's community college or universities. To date, Ms. Wayne has met one-on-one with 67% of our seniors. And these are not just brief, like, drop-in meetings. I mean, she is sitting down with them, she is actively working with them on their applications, their essays. At this point, 41% of our seniors have submitted at least one college application, but the majority of them have submitted several more than that, so we're excited about that. In regards to athletics, we are, well, we have finished up fall sports. Our football team, we were so proud Friday night, they fought really, really hard in the first round of playoffs, and while we didn't get the win that we would have hoped for, um, we're really proud of the progress and growth that they made as a team. And we're really proud of Coach Griffin for the program that he's building, and he is truly teaching them not just to be athletes, but, but to be young men as well. Our volleyball team finished as conference champs and made it to the third round of playoffs. Cross-country, they finished, the boys finished second in the region, and the girls finished third. And this past weekend, we had five girls and seven boys to travel and compete at states. So now we are making the transition to winter sports. I don't think we have a home event until November 28th. It's our first home basketball game, so we have a little bit of a break, um, but we hope that you guys will come out and support. And then lastly, I want to finish with arts. I'm sure you have seen the post, but our marching band has been extremely busy. They participated in five competitions this season, bringing home awards from every competition, and they, they have shown improvement every time, um, with the competition at Carey High School this past weekend being their best yet. Um, in early December, we're going to be having choral concert, band concert, and our theater arts program is going to be putting on, um, a Charlie Brown Christmas play. So we're, we are excited about that. All of the dates and times are on our school calendar, and we hope that you will come out and support, and we hope to see your face. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Lanchi. You can see there's lots of good things happening in our schools, and so we are really excited about it. And like the principals have said, you're certainly welcome to visit the schools, encouraged to visit schools as often as you have the opportunity. That point, I'm all finished with the superintendent's report, but we do have board member time listed there, and didn't know if any board members had anything they want to share tonight. Any board members?
I'd like to, um, um, saying Ms. Vicky Mosley Jones sentiments in terms of the meeting. Uh, it was a great meeting, um, a great presentation. Also volunteered at the, uh, high school during the free application week. Very impressed with the students and their enthusiasm in terms of, um, completing the applications. Also participated in the, the college tour at the high school. Had the opportunity to participate in the, um, Halloween parade that was, um, put on by the, um, Public Partnership for Children. Um, the young children, um, was amazing seeing them all in their costumes. Even I had a costume on, and, and it was a, of a cop, and somebody asked me, did I change jobs? So, that was kind of funny. Also, um, the class of 88 had an opportunity to observe our 35th, um, class reunion. Uh, was pretty good. Like to thank Ms. Lanchi for opening up the high school and allowing us to tour. Uh, I was the tour guide and, um, very hard to control the class of 88 after 35 years. But we did have, um, um, a fun time touring the school and celebrating, um, our former teachers and administration.
Kathy.
I would just like to say that I also enjoyed the meeting on Wednesday, Dr. Johnson. That was a great meeting. It was very informative. The data that you presented was so good, and I thank you for that as well. And I look forward to the November 20th town hall meeting also. And thank you, Ms. James, for your comments on it. I would also like to say thank you to the principals. Your presentations were wonderful. All the things that are going on in the schools is really one point exciting, and I want to thank each of you for the hard work you're putting in.
Anybody on this side? All right. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. We've got one item, and that's to ratify the overnight field trip for the high school cross-country athletes. So we do need to ratify that, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to agenda item five, instruction, and Ms. Dixon.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm presenting for your information that Pamlico County Schools will be submitting by the end of the week a waiver, an individual class size waiver request. Pamlico County Schools has never submitted one of these waivers before, so I appreciate your patience tonight as, as we talk through this, just to kind of let you know what we're going to be doing. LEAs are responsible for submitting these waivers anytime a class size exceeds the maximum ratio in kindergarten through third grade. And right now, currently, despite Dr. Johnson sharing that we're slightly down in our membership, we are over in our class size ratio for third grade. This is based on the attendance as of the 40th day of school, and these waivers have to be submitted by November the 30th. So in your packets tonight, you will see a copy of the waiver request. And on the second page of that waiver request, you see our explanation as to why this class size can't be corrected. In the past, we've been able to move and shift teachers around. So for example, if we were well below class size ratio in another grade level, there was the potential there to take that teacher, move them to another grade level, and kind of average all of the classes out. We know that's not best instructional practices because then you are disrupting two classes of students at that point. And so we are wanting to go ahead and let DPI know where we sit with this class size issue. Also in that box on the second page, you will see, we've known that we were going to have this issue in third grade when we were looking at our numbers over the summer, and that K-6 position has been posted since June the 22nd with no applicants. So it's not that we're not trying to actively pursue a certified teacher to correct that class size. We're just not had any applicants for that, so we're letting DPI know that as well. And then you see, um, listed there in number four, the breakdown of the classes and the number of students in each class. And there you'll see, if we were to take away, for example, a first grade teacher, we would fall within the ratio for first grade, but the minute we got one more first grade student, we'd be right back in the same boat again. So this is really just for your information to let you know we're going to be submitting this. If we hear anything back from DPI, certainly we will let the board know. We did complete this waiver request under the guidance of our regional director. I spoke with her again just this afternoon, and she helped talk us through the best way just this afternoon, and she helped talk us through the best way to complete this, again, because we've never had to submit one of these before. But I will let you know, we are not alone in submitting these waivers. Quite a few districts have had to do this in the past, and we just wanna, like I said, go ahead and get out ahead of DPI doing a poll and finding out that we're out of ratio. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So by completing the waiver, is it a possibility it being denied?
There is a possibility that they could come back with a finding to say, you need to take some other measures to look at how you might alleviate this. And one would be, you know, we could hire a long-term sub, we can open up another class. At that point, they're going to, we're gonna be redistributing students, which, just to let you know, to be very transparent, I've talked with our regional director and other districts around us, and that's not something that they typically support. We know that last year, many of these waivers were submitted, and they were just kind of held, because a lot of districts were in the same boat of not being able to find certified personnel.
Any other questions? Okay, we do have a motion that we have to make to approve the individual class-size waiver requests for Pamlico County Primary School as presented.
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
So the next thing I have for you tonight is a copy of a memorandum of understanding between East Carolina University, North Carolina School Health Training Center, and Pamlico County Schools. In accordance with our Pamlico County Schools' policy thirty-five forty, a comprehensive health education program must be taught to students in kindergarten through ninth grade. As required by law, reproductive health and safety education will begin no earlier than seventh grade. And this memorandum of understanding that you have in your packet tonight maintains an already established partnership with East Carolina and with the School Health Training Center. This partnership includes training for school staff members, so those teachers who will be delivering this health education program. It provides us access to the curriculum, which has already been reviewed with the middle school and in conjunction with East Carolina and the School Health Training Center. And then it also provides follow-up technical assistance as we continue to deliver this program. And that's everything from helping us navigate contacts with parents and tracking student attendance in the program, and then it also assists us in implementing the curriculum. And so tonight, I'm just asking for your approval in continuing this partnership by approving this memorandum of understanding. Yes, ma'am?
Is this the training program, is there a cost for that, or is it free through the partnership?
It's free. So the training is free, and they pay for substitutes for our teachers to go to the training. So there's really no cost to us where this is concerned. The only thing they ask is to keep a record of the number of students that we have to participate, and they cross-reference some of that information with local health agencies, just to see if providing that education benefits the community.
How many hours of training was it?
It was one full day. They'll, we'll go for one full day, and that is like a recert, because again, several of our teachers who have gone have already been trained in the program before, because this is an established partnership.
Any other questions? All right, if not, there is a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to finance.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. The first item under finance is a review of the audit for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and I have Lindy Faulkner here with the CPA firm of Dean Dorton, and he's gonna go over it. I know that Tiffany gave you a full copy of the entire report. I've condensed it a little bit for you, so for the pages that Lindy will be focusing on and talking about, and of course, if you have any questions during his presentation or after, be sure and let us know.
Thanks, Steve. Again, my name's Lindy Faulkner. As Steve mentioned, you received the audit report last week, it's probably about a hundred pages long, so we're not gonna stand here and go through that whole thing. It takes several hours, so we've condensed it down to probably fifteen or twenty pages that I'm gonna cover. So the first thing I'm gonna cover is the independent auditor's report, which should be pages one through three, what you have in front of you. And this just states that we have audited the financial statements of Pamlico County Schools as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly presented. Goes on to talk about the basis for our opinion that we conducted our audit reports with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and with governmental auditing standards. Talks about responsibilities of management and responsibilities of the auditor in the financial statements. Moving on to the second page, there's some required supplementary information, mainly the board proportionate share of the net pension in OPEB or other post-employment benefit liabilities, and the schedule of the board contributions towards those, and then also some supplementary information on the funds and the budget information as well. And then page three talks about, with the governmental audit, we have to consider the internal control. We do not offer an opinion on that, but we do look at compliance of that, and we did not find any non-compliance issues with the internal control. As far as any items of internal control, everything was good in that area as well. So that's the auditor's report. Let's move on to what we call exhibit one, which should be your page nine at the top. And this is a government-wide financial, or balance sheet. When I say government-wide, that means it's more of a long-term focus, so we've got capital assets and long-term liabilities on here, so it may not look as pretty as it would if it was just the governmental funds, which we'll look at in just a minute. So we have two columns, the governmental activities and the business type, which is the child nutrition, and we'll look at both of those separately in just a moment. But you will see total assets, looking at the far right-hand column, total assets of nine million, one fifty-four. We have something called deferred outflows of resources for pensions and for OPEB. That's kinda like a prepaid expense, it's already been paid out there, that's gonna be used to satisfy these liabilities in the future. So you see six point nine million for the pensions and four point four for the OPEB. Liabilities, we have very little on accounts payable or unearned revenue, but you do have a big pension liability and a big OPEB liability. And these liabilities are calculated, you know, statewide and allocated to your county by the actuary, and they're gonna fluctuate based on, basically by the performance of investments and so forth. So the last couple, eighteen months or so before this year, so this is kind of the value before, like, maybe December thirty-first of twenty-two and, or twenty-one, and rolled forward to June thirtieth of twenty-two, so it's kind of a year behind, because they have to put all this information together to get that to you, to get out to the schools. So that was, you know, not a good time for investments in that time period, so you see some pretty big liabilities. But again, that's gonna fluctuate based on investments. How you're gonna pay for that is you make contributions each month, you know, through the retirement system, and that percentage will increase or decrease over time to meet these obligations. So you don't have to, nobody's gonna come to you tomorrow and say, you know, you gotta pay this liability. It's gonna be paid through time, through those retirement contributions. We have outflows of resources, so we also have inflows, and these are kinda like liabilities for, that will require future use of funds. So you take your assets minus your liabilities, and you come up to your net position, and the total net position for the government-wide system is negative twelve million dollars, a deficit of twelve million dollars. However, in that, realize you've got these big pension OPEB liabilities and deferred outflows and deferred resources. So we'll see what it looks like without, without some of that in just a moment. But this, this covers everything government-wide. So let's move on to the exhibit three, which will just focus on the funds themselves, kinda just the governmental funds. So if you kinda open this up like a book, where you have the left-hand side, we've got the general fund, the state public school fund, and the individual schools, and then the other funds to the right. Just looking at the far right-hand column, the total governmental funds. Again, this is more of a short-term focus, it does not include the child nutrition, and it does not include any liability, or long-term liabilities or capital assets. So you see the total assets of the governmental funds, one point nine million, very few liabilities, seventy-five thousand. That assets minus liabilities gives you a fund balance of positive one point eight million. So that's kinda what it looks like without all those liabilities for the employee benefits. The bottom is just a reconciliation to get us back to what the number we had on exhibit one. All right, let's look at exhibit four, the income statement for these particular funds. Again, this does not include child nutrition, we'll look at that separately in just a moment. So again, you've got, you've kinda opened it up like a book, you've got each individual fund. Far right-hand side, the total governmental funds, you see twenty-two point seven million dollars of revenue, and that's broken out between the state of North Carolina, Pamlico County, US government, and then some other contributions. So twenty-two point seven million, that's about three hundred thousand more in revenue than the year before. And then you've got your expenditures, you've got your instructional services, your system-wide support, and your capital outlay. So a total expenditures of twenty-three million. So revenues minus expenses gives us about three hundred ten thousand dollar loss for the year. Add that to your beginning fund balance, you still have a positive one point eight million dollar fund balance. Any questions on the governmental funds before we move to the child nutrition? All right, let's look at the child nutrition balance sheet and income statement, first starting with exhibit seven, the balance sheet of child nutrition. You see the assets, cash, inventory, so forth. Current assets, five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The capital assets, property and equipment, gives us total assets of seven eleven. Okay, so the child nutrition has to have an allocation of these outflows and inflows and liabilities as well, but it's a very small, small allocation, but we do have to include that. So you see the deferred outflows for child nutrition there, and then the liabilities, and then the pension and the OPEB liabilities. So our assets minus our liabilities on child nutrition, we still have a positive, net positive, net position of two ninety-eight, so that's very good. It's not a deficit, it's run a deficit for many years. I think last year was the, kind of the big, or the last couple of years, the big, big turning points, and it's gotten this into a positive territory, so we're still positive at two ninety-eight. Looking at the income statement for child nutrition over on exhibit eight, you'll see that the operating revenues are forty-one thousand, that's up about eighteen thousand dollars. Operating expenses were nine thirty-eight, that's about seventy-five thousand dollars more than the prior year. Then you have non-operating revenues, eight hundred and thirty thousand, that was actually about three hundred thousand dollars less. We just had a couple of years where we got a lot more federal money in, that did not, did not come in this year. You did get something called contributed capital, so an equipment grant of fifty-three thousand dollars that allows you to buy some equipment. I think a walk-in freezer was purchased with that. So we take our revenues minus our expenses and add our grant, and we had a loss of twelve thousand, eight ninety-eight, so almost a break-even for child nutrition for twenty-twenty-three. We add that to our beginning net position, and we have an ending net position, positive two ninety-eight. So that's really the income and balance sheet and income statement for the funds. If we look at some individual funds, if we go all the way to page fifty-two in your handout, the first thing that we come to is the general fund, and this is kinda what we saw in exhibit four, income statement, but this has the actual numbers compared to the budget numbers. So kinda looking down the actual column, you see the funding from Pamlico County, four point three million, a total revenue of four million, three sixty-nine. Below that, for the next two pages, you have a comparison of actual expenses to budgeted expenses. We did have one instance of a little over budget of three hundred and fifty dollars in one line item. But if you come all the way down to the bottom of page fifty-three, you see the net change in fund balance is a minus one sixty-nine, so a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar loss. However, if you look over in the budget column, an appropriation of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars was made to that fund balance, anticipating that there was gonna be a loss for the year. So it came out about ten thousand dollars better than what was budgeted. All right, so the next fund we'll look at is on page fifty-five, this is the other restricted fund. Again, it's just like exhibit four, but with the budget and actual numbers. So you see the revenues from the state of North Carolina, two fifty-two, from the US government, two thirty-four, and then some other funding, for a total revenue of nine eighty-two. And then you have your expenditures, actual versus budget, that continues on fifty, on fifty-five and fifty-six, everything is under budget. If you go all the way to the bottom, next, the last column there, actual, near the bottom, net change in fund balance, a loss of sixty-five dollars. However, again, if you look over to the appropriated fund balance, the last item in the budget column, budget, anticipation of a two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollar loss was anticipated, so it came out much, much better than was, when it was originally budgeted. And the last detailed fund we'll look at is the capital outlay fund. Again, looking at our revenues, actual to budgeted items, you see the state of North Carolina, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, Pamlico County, four hundred and thirty-five thousand. The total revenues, and then some other miscellaneous revenues, a six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then again, expenses compared to their actual, or I mean, the actual expenses compared to the budget, all the way down to the net change in fund balance, a loss of ninety-nine, five seventy-three. Again, look over to the appropriated fund balance, the last item of the budget column, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand was an anticipated loss, so roughly twenty-seven thousand better than anticipated. And then the last item we look at, all the way to page sixty-eight, this is a schedule of federal and state awards, just required information showing you the federal awards that come in under what they call the CFDA number, or for a state, a PRC number. So you see, from the Department of Agriculture, you got eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That was down about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the prior year. From the Department of Education, you got two point seven million, that was down about two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Again, a lot of this is, you know, during the COVID years, which lasted two or three years, there was a lot more, you know, funding from some of the government, from the federal government in those past couple of years. So turning to page sixty-nine, you see the total federal assistance of three point six million, which is down about four hundred thousand dollars from the prior year. And below that's the state grants, the state funding from DPI, thirteen point seven million, that's actually a little bit more, about three hundred and seventy-five thousand more than you had received the prior year. And then you had some school bus appropriation where they help with the school buses. The total funding from the state was thirteen point eight million. Any questions on anything I've covered? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We do have a motion to approve the auditor's annual report as presented. So at this time, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next item is presentation of the uniform budget and budget resolution. Tiffany, do they have copies, copies of this? Okay, let's look at the budget resolution form first. This may look somewhat familiar. For the past four or five months, we've been doing interim budget resolutions, waiting on the state to pass the state budget, and now that we have the initial allotments from the state of North Carolina, we went ahead and prepared this budget resolution. It is broken down by all the different funds, and I'll just, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I'll start with the, on the first page, this is the local current expense fund, these are the expenditures. You can see they're broken down by instructional programs, system-wide support services, auxiliary services, and non-program charges. Total expenses, four million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. And then right below that, you see the revenues that offset those expenses. The county appropriation to Pamlico County Schools is three point nine million. The county appropriation to our Apoog Charter School is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight oh nine. And then the local revenue is thirty-one thousand, which is mainly made up of fines and forfeitures that we receive from the that we receive from the clerical courts office. Okay, on page 2 at the top, you see the total there of the revenues for local. Then right below that is the state public school fund. Expenditures, again, broken down by instructional, system-wide support, ancillary programs, a total of $12,1,853. And what, basically what I've done is when we get the initial allotments from the state of North Carolina, it's not all the allotments. Some of them, we kind of get in portions and sections, but I typically try to take those initial allotments and nothing else because I want it to be comparative to last year's numbers. So that number is $12,001,853. And then you see the, down at the bottom, you see the offsetting revenue. Top of page 3, federal grant fund. Same thing here, just these are kind of the initial allotments. These do not take into consideration carryover, and we do have quite a few federal programs with some, with some good carryover balances. But these are just initial allotments coming from the state, again, to keep it so we can compare to last year's numbers. And the total is $16,6484. And then right below that, you see the corresponding revenue. Child nutrition fund is, is at the bottom of page 3, estimating expenditures of $650,000. This varies from year to year, as you heard Lindy say. For the past two or three years, we've been profitable. A lot of that has had to do with additional funding that has come to the child nutrition program due to COVID. And now that's kind of slacked off now, and we're not, we don't have the benefits of doing that. So a, a net loss of almost $13,000 is very good. I'm, I'm very pleased with that. Ms. Lawrence is doing a, is doing a great job with the child nutrition program. If you get too much, you keep making too much money, they're gonna, somebody's gonna slap me on the hand and say, you're, you know, you're making too much. Child nutrition is supposed to be a break even sole proprietorship. They pretty much function on their own. So we don't like it when we lose money, but you can't make too much money either. So you have to have a couple of months' worth of fund balance to pay bills in the event that something happened, and we do have that, so we're in, we're in good shape. Okay, then at the top of page 4 are the revenue streams for child nutrition. As you see, the majority comes from federal funds, $609,000. And of course, we are, we are part of the CEP program, Community Eligibility Provision. This year, all four schools eat breakfast and lunch for free, and we get reimbursed for that. So last year, we didn't include the high school, but we did decide to try that this year, and I think we've seen an increase in the participation of those high school kids. Some of them just aren't going to eat, period. But if it's free, some of them will, in fact, go through the lines. So we're thankful for that. The local funds of $41,000 is typically supplemental sales, kids buying cookies, you know, drinks or whatever that may be available that they can buy over and above the regular, the regular lunch. Other restricted fund, Section 9, you see the total there of $525,017. And then right below that are the revenues. And remember, this is, this is fund aid of the restricted fund that was created years ago to protect this money so it wouldn't have to be shared with charter schools. Okay, this is my favorite fund, so we don't have to share it with anybody. And you can see what we run through there, the revenues that are generated, sales tax refund, $33,000. The NC pre-K grant, $296,940. And then on the top of page 5, Medicaid claims, $31,577. The federal refund part that we get from the Navy for the ROTC instructors, $100,000. $2,500 local rent of school property, other local operating revenues, and indirect cost. So you see that figure there, $525,000 that we do not have to share. That would be a pretty big chunk of money if you took that and took about 16% of that to have to share with charter schools. Right below that is the capital outlay fund, and this is broken down by categories. First one is lands and buildings, $64,715 down at the bottom. And then on the top of page 6, category 2 furniture and equipment, $302,000. Of course, the bulk of that is then the technology budget, $290 of that. And then category 3 for motor vehicles. We purchased a maintenance truck, and y'all have been very gracious to help us get our fleet up to date, and that's, that has happened, so we're thankful for that. Plus, the lease purchase payment on a activity bus that we got last year. So the total, $436,800. And you can see that, right below that in Section 12, $386,800 comes from the county commissioners, and then $50,000 fund balance. The uniform budget document, if you want me to go with that, I will. It's basically the same information, it's just in a different format. But it, it basically tells us, it gives us a starting point, and we're thankful for the, thanks to the General Assembly, we're about four or five months behind in getting things going. So we're thankful to have the budget and get the initial allotments from the, from DPI so we can get everything figured out and get people placed where they need to be as far as getting, getting our employees paid. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, we've got a motion to approve the budget resolution and uniform budget as presented.
Motion.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 7, governance. Dr. Johnson.
The, the budget, that 2023 state budget, it had all sorts of things in it. One thing that has come to light after it was passing was a new requirement in Section 7.41 that all public school employees involved in the making or administering of contracts receive a minimum of two hours of conflicts of interest training. For school employees with contracting authority, as of October 3, the budget requires initial training within six months of the budget's effective date, which is April 3. And again, in every odd-numbered year. Essentially, the law specifies this training must include position-specific education on conflicts of interest and ethical standards of conduct. Also states the training may be provided by any qualified source at the choice of the local Board of Education. So what I'm bringing to you tonight, a viable source of this training is the North Carolina Association of School Administrators in order to help applicable members, which we're members, comply with these new requirements. The NCASA is currently developing a free two-hour training video featuring an overview of current laws as well as job-specific examples. So just bringing to you, asking for a motion to approve the NCASA as our qualified source for training, because we've got to make that decision tonight, so.
Any questions on this, Kathy?
So would that be like the people working in our human resources department?
Yes, ma'am. Anybody who has any sort of contracting authority, we're going to ask them to participate. So finance, human resources personnel, our exceptional children's director, since she works with, with contracting, third, you know, contractors and that kind of thing.
Yes, two hours of training?
Yes, ma'am.
And they would have to go?
Well, it's going to be virtual, so we can do it here, but it's, that's one of the nice things about it, and it's, it's going to be coming through, through them. But you all have, are charged with, with determining what that qualified source will be, and that's why we're bringing it to you.
So we as a board would not have to participate?
No, ma'am. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have to do it. You just have to say it's okay for us to use them. You recognize them as a qualified source.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yes, ma'am.
Good for y'all.
I see what you're doing there. Is it kind of saying, so who's having to do this? Yes, ma'am.
I think that's good. I'm making the motion.
Yeah, okay. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Let's see. Ms. Davis, yep.
Good evening. Public schools may receive Medicaid funds for some health services provided for students at school. The services must be medically necessary, and the student must be enrolled, be enrolled in NC Medicaid. Some of the services that we can get Medicaid reimbursement for include occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech pathology. I'd like to present tonight the contract to PCG so that they can file for Medicaid on behalf of our school district for Medicaid reimbursement for certain related services for students with disabilities. The district will not be invoiced until after reimbursement begins. Pricing for this will be 13% of the reimbursement total per year or a minimum of $2,500. The district will not be invoiced with reimbursements that were not received. Several counties, surrounding counties, we did a check around us, are using this third-party vendor to get Medicaid reimbursement. At one point, this was something that was done in-house, but it became very complicated when COVID hit because service delivery changed so much when we were being virtual. So this is an opportunity to have PCG file for reimbursement. We don't do anything, and the money that we pay them for invoices comes from what we get reimbursed. So tonight, I would like approval for this contract for PCG to file for Medicaid reimbursement. Yes?
So I had a question about, is this something that happens online? The EdPlant program, is that an online service?
EdPlant, well, the service isn't online. Related service providers input their services. EdPlant, this PCG has access to it because PCG also provides ECATS, which is our special education service that has all of our students' information. And it also is 504 plans. EdPlant is under PCG too. So it's the same umbrella. That's the umbrella for ECATS, is Medicaid reimbursement and the 504 plans.
What are the difference? I didn't understand, what are the difference in performance-based fee and the incremental reimbursement, where you said 2,500 versus the, what was it, 13%?
Okay, 13%, that's what, if we get, whatever we get, they get 13% of the reimbursement. But there is a minimum of $2,500 that they have to, that they have to get for reimbursement. Anything less than 25, and this is for the year, this is not each month. Anything less than that 2,500, we'd have to make up for that minimum, but it's not likely to be less than 2,500.
So this is for things like the occupational therapists that come in, the physical therapists, speech therapists, those types of, okay, I understand that.
Rachel Legals reviewed this.
I've looked at it, yes.
Okay.
And I, there are, there are many school systems that are using.
That are using, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? All right, we need a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Thank you. And Dr. Patrick.
Good evening, board members. Share with you a few weeks ago, a set of policies that need to be reviewed, and I'm going to ask you tonight if you will waive your requirement for a second reading because we need this adopted tonight on first read because school nutrition will have a review at the end of this month, and those policies need to have been adopted prior to the review. So I'm asking you tonight for consideration of adoption of those three policies.
Any questions on these? I don't think so. So our first motion, we need to waive Board Policy 1514, which requires two readings. So if we can have a motion on that first.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Now we need a motion to approve the policies for adoption and archival as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you.
Also, before you tonight, there's a list of policies that need to be archived due to our recent adoptions. So I'm asking you that you would consider approving the archive of these policies tonight.
And I think I just covered that in the last motion, I believe. Didn't I, Rachel?
Yes, you did.
Yeah. Yep. All right.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Yep, thank you. All right, 7D.
Memorandum of Understanding. Yes, this is a long-awaited document. It's one of these, something that we have been working with our, our friends on the Board of Commissioners for a while now. This is a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and Pamlico County, which will, it's essentially, it will begin, if doesn't do anything else, it's going to allow the flow of funds to begin. And that's something we have been sorely needing. This is something that we have looked at and have revised over the past couple of, of months. You'll, you'll remember, we presented that very first proposal. Thing I passed out to you, I guess it was at the last meeting, was the initial draft, and that was, that was provided by the county's attorney. Since then, Brandon McPherson, our attorney, and David Baxter, their attorney, and then, and then our oversight committee have been meeting to go through this. This is, we've arrived at several revisions, and this is the, the one that we're bringing for your consideration tonight. In fact, the county commissioners are meeting right now, and it is on their agenda for consideration too. But we would love to have this approved tonight. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, and I'll just say that I've communicated a lot with Brandon, and Kathy has been on our oversight committee, and Jean as well. At our last meeting, pretty much the, the majority of the meeting was the memorandum of understanding, and we all left with a document that we were all happy with. So in order for us to get on a synced billing cycle, which will definitely help Steve out a lot, it's, it's really imperative that we approve this memorandum of understanding Any questions from any of our other board members that have not served on that committee? All right, if there's no questions, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented.
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Steve just breathed a big sigh of relief. I agree. Hopefully, our commissioners will do the same tonight, and I'm pretty sure they will. All right, Mr. Dudley.
I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education, entered into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and GS 115C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1, 5 and 6, and 115C-319. And to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to provide, preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, I have a motion, need a second.
Second.
All right, motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going in closed session at 7:25.
All right. We're good. All right, we're back from closed session. I need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Motion.
There we go. I was waiting on that. We got it. Motion second. All the favor raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Look at our next meeting dates, training and board events. So we'll be in Greensburg this time next week. And looking forward to that. And hopefully we can all carve out a time one night. I think we did it last year. Most everybody was able to go. Maybe as a board and Dr. Johnson, we can all go have dinner somewhere one night. So we'll be looking into that. Also, our December meeting is December 4th. As a reminder, at that meeting is when we will hold elections for board chair and board vice chair. Just want to make sure everybody knows that. And then after that, remember December 19th. If you have not RSVP'd, I don't know if you've received everybody or not. But if you have not, make sure, please let Tiffany know. So that'll be on the 19th. And then we'll be rolling right into Christmas in 2024. So I don't know where '23 went. It has flown by. So I think that's everything. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Motion second. All the favor raise your right hand. All right, good meeting. Thank you, everyone.
All right.